Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of council. Could I ask you to rise, please? I'd like to call on councillor Mays for the prayer.
Let's restate the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to call on the clerk for an announcement, please.
It's not an announcement, no. Adoption of minutes. There's a number of pecuniary interests that councillor Wing identified at the last meeting. Some of these haven't been reflected in the specific votes, but we've made the corrections, so you can adopt the minutes with those amendments.
Okay. Councillor? Okay. So, the first order of business, members of council, is the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of October 6, 2008. Pleasure of council. Moved by councillor Carey or seconded by councillor Mays. Any further comments with the inclusion of the corrections that was mentioned by our clerk? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. This time I'm going to ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest by any members of council. Councillor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Worship, under miscellaneous planning matters, PD 2008 99, dealing with consent application on Ort Road and Rexinger Road. I have a family member that owns property in the near vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wing.
From the Corporate Services Committee meeting prior to this, the Niagara Falls Board of Museums funding request. My spouse is employed there.
Okay. Anything further? And I'd like to declare a conflict and check number 322932 payable to myself. This time, I'm going to begin with presentations and deputations, and I'm very pleased to invite Penny Christie from MPAC to be with us in council this evening, who's going to advise us of the new assessment procedures scheduled for this year. Welcome, Penny.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Salsi and councillors, administrators staff. Thank you very much. My name is Penny Christie. I'm the municipal relations representative from the local assessment office in St. Catharines. With me I have Ben Cunningham, who is the Senior Valuation Analyst for Residential Properties. If I could bring your attention to your folder. You have a copy of the presentation. You have a copy of the information insert that went with the notice, sample assessment notice. You have a couple of slides of About My Property, which is a tool in our website for the property owner to look up comparable properties. You have a sample of the Request Reconsideration Form to be used, starting in 2009. Who does what? The province determines how the properties in Ontario will be assessed. MPAC, governed by this legislation, will assess almost 4.7 million properties in Ontario and classify them into the different groups, being residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. Now, the municipality has to come out with the total revenue of what it would cost to provide the services to the property owners. Once it comes up with this total revenue, it has to create the tax rates that, when multiplied against the assessments that are delivered in December, will equal that total revenue. The Assessment Review Board is an independent tribunal that listens to the appeals and complaints. Current value assessment of real property is based on what a property would be expected to sell for on the open market between a willing seller and a willing buyer. We analyze valid sales only, therefore, we do not analyze any family sales, power of sales, or foreclosures. Starting today, and I know they went out, because my husband called me today and said that we have our assessment notice, so I just, he was thrilled, I knew it would be there. On this notice is the 2008 assessed value of what the property would sell for if sold in January of 2008. Previous to this, the assessed value represented what that property would sell for if sold in January of 2005. The three years of market, or three years of analyzed sales, will be phased in equally over the next four years, starting in 2009, as introduced by the province in Bill 187. Also, Bill 187 stated, we've changed from an annual update to a four-year cycle, beginning in 2009, and that decreases will be implemented immediately. Therefore, if there's a decrease, you will see it right away. It's not phased in. Then, a year later, in 2008, Bill 44 was introduced, and it stated that the phase-in will apply to all property classes. So, Bill 187 stated, it was for farm, residential, managed forest. Bill 44 said, no, it will be for all, commercial, industrial, all property classes. Also, very important, beginning in 2009, the Request for Reconsideration, which is a free review by MPAC, the deadline has been changed from December 31st to March 31st of the current tax year. That's very important, because if anyone has filed a Request for Reconsideration previously, they thought, well, I've got all year, I can do it in September, or whatever, no. The deadline is March 31st. And also, for residential, farm, and managed forest properties, it's a mandatory first stage. Previously, a residential property owner could file a Request for Reconsideration, or directly to the ARB. They no longer can. They must file a Request for Reconsideration first, by March 31st. And the reverse onus of proof for appeals regarding value is on MPAC, when they go to ARB. Now, we've spent a lot of time reformatting and adding information to the notice. We've included extensive feedback from focus groups we held last fall. There's been new legislative requirements we've incorporated into the notice, as well as recommendations from the ombudsman and from the MPAC board. Starting today and all week, property owners in Niagara region will be receiving their assessment notice, and there will be approximately 170,883 notices going out in this area. This is the assessment notice. You may want to look at the one that's in your folder, it's a little easier to read. I will not be going in detail on this notice, because the following slides will be describing parts, but in the upper left, you have the name and mailing address. Below that, you have the notice message about the reassessment, and the last line states that the Request for Reconsideration must be filed by March 31st. Below that, you have the property's description, property's value, tax class, and below that, very important, the phased-in assessment for each year, 2009, 10, 11, and 12. Below that, you have the school support and the property summary. And on the right-hand side, at the very top, you have the contact information. So, you have the call center, if you have any questions. You have our website and our fax number. Below that percentage of change tells you that this property has gone up this percent in comparison to the average percent for that municipality, and property profile information About My Property, which we'll be going into. Here's part of the notice, the property's assessed value classification. The classification of this property is residential, it could say, commercial, whatever. 2008 assessed value is 220,000. This property sold in January 2008, they could expect to get approximately 220,000. The previous assessed value on this property was 180,000. Difference is 40,000. This is the amount that will be phased in equally. Part of your notice that shows the actual phase-in, 40,000, works out to 10,000 each year. 2009 tax year, be 190,000, then 200, 210, 220. When you reach the 2012 tax year, at 220,000, you've actually reached the 2008 assessed value. Again, the phase-in does not apply to the assessment decreases. Property summary, type of property. It's a single-family dwelling. It could say duplex, triplex, whatever here. Then you have the property size, which is the dimensions of the property, frontage and depth. Then below that, you have two new pieces of data, the structure size, the building square footage, and when the structure was built, year of construction. Percentage of change, this states that the property has gone up this percent in comparison for the 2009 tax year by the municipal average. Property profile information. What is really good is, we had About My Property before. You could go into our website, and you could look up comparable properties, but previously you had to call the call center, you had to get a password, and it was a little bit just a hassle. But what they've done now is, they've put the user ID and password right on the notice, on every notice. So, if you own three properties, you will have a unique user ID and password on each notice. And when you actually go and log in with the user ID and password, the computer will recognize your neighborhood and your property. The information insert has information on the assessment process, the budget, Request for Reconsideration, and Appeal process. As I stated, About My Property, the one thing I didn't mention is that a property owner has access to a property profile report. So, when they go into this About My Property, they can trigger a property profile report, and that just gives them information about their property, square footage, number of bathrooms, heating, et cetera, and up to a detailed property report for up to 24 properties of their choice. This is the sample login screen. You can see the blue parcel. When the property owner had keyed in their user ID and password, the computer recognized their neighborhood, brought them right into it, and highlighted their property. They can click up to 100 parcels around their property, and where you see the red box, that's called a property detail snapshot, which tells them their square footage, the year built, current assessed value of other properties. They can do that up to 100. And if they actually want to get a detailed property report, they have up to 24 properties, which gives them even more information to use as comparables. Request reconsideration. Again, the deadline is March 31st of the tax year. It's a mandatory first step for residential, farm, and managed forest, but not for commercial, industrial, or other property classes. In other words, they can file a Request for Reconsideration, or they can file directly to the ARB, but both must be done by March 31st. Also, what's new is that when a property owner files a Request for Reconsideration, we will send an acknowledgement letter, and also a standard disclosure package, which is a property profile, which will give them some information on their property without them asking. So, the average percent change by broad tax class for Niagara Falls. In the orange is the 2009 tax year. The blue is the three-year increase, from 2005 to 2008. So, as you can see, for the residential, 2009, it's 4.38 percent. 2005 versus 2008, it's 17.85 percent. Then you have the farm, multi-res, commercial, and industrial. Here you have the average assessed value by selected residential property. Very first one, that's a property code. Each property has an internal property code to identify it. Single-family detached is a 301. In 2005, the average property for a single-family detached was 174,985. Now, for 2008, it's 204,375 is the average assessed value. Percent change there, 16.8 percent. And this is just showing it as a graph. You can see the 2005 is the blue, and the 2008 is the orange. Blue is, yeah, just shows the increase in the two years. So, just a recap, there's extended office hours, starting today, in St. Catharines Assessment Office, for four weeks, from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 PM. Call center has extended hours. What I would like to ask is that, when you receive your assessment notice, you look at your 2008 assessed value and ask yourself, could you have sold that property in January 2008 for that amount? If you say yes, then you know it's accurate. If you say no, there is absolutely no way, then I urge you to call the call center, the number's on the notice, and ask them to verify the information that we have on your property. If it's accurate and you still do not agree, file a Request for Reconsideration. It is free, but by March 31st, the ARB will explain, if you file a Request for Reconsideration, let's say by February 15th, and we've talked to you, we've gone out to the property, we've sent you our response to that request, and we sent it June 1st, from that point on, you have 90 days to appeal to the ARB. There is a fee for that, but you still, it's like a rolling, so you have 90 days from the time you receive the outcome of the RFR, a Request for Reconsideration. We have to have all of them done by September 30th, unless all parties agree, then we have till November 30th of the tax year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. There may be questions from members of council, Penny. So, councillor Fisher.
Thank you. It's quite a report, kind of scary. But what I'd like to know is, your assessment was in January of 2008? Has the market not dropped in the last few months? Have we not seen market values reduce? Now, how do we approach that?
The sales in 2005, '06, and '07 were analyzed to come up to the January 1st, 2008 value. All the sales in 2008, '09, '10, and '11 will go into analyzing to come up to the January 1st, 2012, to be the next reassessment, for 2013, '14, '15, and '16.
Right now, the market is soft. By the year 2012, the market could rebound, but right now, it's soft. How do we approach that as taxpayers?
That is, when the province had first introduced the annual assessments, that would have been captured. When they introduced the four-year cycle, that's what happens, is that it's frozen. The sales are analyzed for the three-year. I know exactly what you're saying, and I know. That's where you have people saying about the annual versus the four-year, but, as I said, the sales are analyzed for those three years, come up to the 2008. Now, this market and the couple of next years will be for the 2012.
It's a significant increase. We're dealing with the budget now, and everybody needs to be getting more because of the region has brought in, and now we have the assessment, which has grown significantly. How do we go to the taxpayer and give them such an increase? I mean, we're going to have to help fund.
Were you going to have to ask everyone to cut back? Or? This assessment doesn't necessarily mean there's an increase in taxes.
Councillor Fisher, I'm going to ask our manager of revenue to address that as well, so, no, Mr. Harrison will address that. We'll fix the tax rate, as Penny has suggested. So, if the qualifier is, and we discussed this earlier, Penny, is the, if the average increase is 17 percent in residential, we wouldn't necessarily have a 17 percent increase in taxes. I'm sure that wouldn't be acceptable to our ratepayer, and perhaps Mr. Harrison can qualify that, that when the council finally establishes its tax rate, which should come down to a point, then the, is that fair to say? There will be no, the increase will be reflected in that tax rate. Is that fair to say?
The assessment that is provided in the notices is the valuation, as Mrs. Christie has indicated, as of January 1st, 2008, and is used by municipalities to determine their level of taxable assessment. Moving forward, through our budget deliberations, we'll use that information, as well as all of the other information on revenues and our expenditures, to determine what the tax levy would be. The two are related, but they are not the same. So, certainly, I hope that clears that up for you.
Hope that clears it up. So, because we have a 17 percent increase in assessment, it may not necessarily be 17 percent increase in taxes, because we would establish a tax rate, which hopefully was somewhat lower than this year's tax rate, so.
Well, because, because what we're dealing with is, everyone wants an increase, and the region hasn't bought this one yet, and now we're getting a 17 percent in assessment. I've never yet seen our taxes go down. Thank you.
That's an area that Ms. Christie doesn't deal in, so, okay. Any other questions, members of council? If not, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate that. We look forward to receiving our new assessments and making inquiries that are necessary. Thank you. Move on to planning matters, and at this point, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a six-story hotel at 5956 Clark Avenue and 5950 Victoria Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail, in accordance with the Planning Act, on Tuesday, October 14th, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to ask the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlowich.
Thank you, Worship. This property involves the lands behind the Marriott Courtyard Hotel on Victoria Avenue. It's currently occupied by a parking lot at the current moment, as you can see in the photograph. The lands are 4.9 acres. They front on Victoria Avenue, they extend through to Clark Street or Clark Avenue, and the lands to the east are the former railway lands, lands of the Hoco Company. To the south is a parking lot, and to the west and north are various commercial uses, hotels and restaurants. The applicant has a current building, the Marriott Courtyard on the property, that's the building that's, has the red lines drawn through it. The property also has approvals for a 30-story hotel. That's the small building towards the bottom of the picture, which is approved, but not yet built. And the application before council tonight is for the gray building with the red outline on the right-hand side of the slide, and that would be the six-story, 124-unit hotel that's being requested. The property, as I mentioned, is already, is two acres, 4.9 acres. They're looking to establish a six-story hotel with 124 units. They want to retain the existing zoning that, for the 10-story hotel, it's all known as the Marriott Courtyard, plus retain the 30-story approval. They're also looking to continue approvals that they currently enjoy, which is, they don't require any of their hotels to contain meeting rooms or restaurants, although certainly there are restaurants on there, it's not a requirement. They also aren't required to provide parking for those facilities. The applicant is requesting a site-specific zoning as well, related to lot coverage, so that they can retain the current tourist commercial zone. Those provisions were removed with the last application, the last couple of applications. They're seeking to have these reinstated. This would allow other smaller buildings to be constructed on the property to meet the zoning requirements. They will be providing their parking either onsite or offsite on a property on Dunn Street, which is currently serving this property. The official plan for the property designates it as tourist commercial, it's within the Fallsview sub-district of the official plan, which promotes large-scale accommodations, entertainment, retail, cultural attractions. The development over four stories is required to meet certain built-form guidelines, so that the, creates a street presence, reduces the massing of the building, mitigates wind effects. We've reviewed this application, found that it does conform with the official plan with respect to being a low-rise building. They've also placed the building adjacent to the railway lands, which are identified as a Grand Boulevard, the 50 Grand Boulevard, that would be developed. They would have opportunities to open up the building to that facility. They, excuse me, they're also seeking a height relief, which would accommodate the six-story plus a decorative roof feature. The hotel is only slightly taller than the 15-meter limit that's set for low-rise buildings. The zoning on this property, as I mentioned, already has approvals for two hotels, they're seeking to retain that. The proposal for this building is to have a height of 26 meters. It does follow the guidelines, design guidelines, excuse me, design guidelines applicable to this building. Six meters of the building, or 20 feet, is to be used as a roof feature to improve the overall architectural appearance of the hotel. The proposal is that the hotel would not have a full restaurant or meeting rooms, given that there are facilities on the property and elsewhere in the area. This is acceptable. The applicant is also requesting the regular TC zoning be reinstated, that's to allow 70 percent lot coverage and buildings up to height. This is consistent with development that would also be allowed on adjacent lands. The, because the building does exceed four stories, we do have a policy that requires contribution to streetscape improvements. We collect those under Section 37 agreement under the Planning Act, and we would be seeking a contribution towards improvements on Victoria, Clark Avenue, Grand Boulevard. It's recommended that the agreement be revised, excuse me, to incorporate the construction of this six-story hotel. The development will be subject to site plan control. There is a site plan agreement on the property currently, that would be revised, and we would address the traffic circulation matters. The applicant has prepared a traffic report in the past for the 30-story building, and that would be updated to reflect this particular hotel. Altogether with the three buildings, there'll be 660 rooms on the site. And because of the amount of pedestrian traffic, which will be generated, we are looking to have the sidewalks and crosswalks identified, which will be done at the site plan stage. Therefore, we've concluded that the application is consistent with our official plan, which would require the section 37 agreement to be adjusted, and therefore, we recommend itself approved for this property to allow the additional six-story hotel to the two that are already permitted and reinstated for its commercial zone, and we have probably the others on council's agenda, and we'll have to do house by house until they approve this on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlowich. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board discussing, I'm sorry, dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here, other than the applicant, who wishes to speak to this bylaw amendment? Once again, is there anyone here, other than the applicant, who wishes to speak? And having seen none, at this time, the council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Please come forward.
Good evening, Worship, members of council. I have nothing to add, if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Vakka? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Having seen no questions, at this time, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded.
Move the report.
Pleasure of council. We have most motion by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo to move the report. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you very much.
You said the bill for that? Just said.
Once again, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a duplex at 6005 Drummond Road. Notice was given by first-class mail, in accordance with the Planning Act, on Friday, October 3rd, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'm going to call on the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlowich.
Thank you, Worship. This property is on the west side of Drummond Road. This property is on the west side of Drummond Road. The lot is currently vacant. You can see it in the picture. It's at a house on it, which has been demolished and the lot leveled. The property, again, is shown here. It's between Cur Street and Barker Street on the west side of Drummond Road. It's approximately 7,500 square feet, so it's a fairly large lot. To the south are two residential properties, which council previously had approved for vacation cottage rental dwelling units. To the west are residential dwelling units, as there are to the north and to the east. The site plan that's been submitted with this application shows the location of the dwelling. This would be a duplex dwelling, two units. The, there is a two-car garage provided at the front of the building with the driveway off Drummond Road. Council had previously considered an application for this property in 2006, allowing the dwelling to be used as a cottage rental dwelling in addition to the two that I mentioned in the south of this property. However, the lands are designated in the official plan as residential, therefore the use of the land is to be for purposes. The site is suitable for multiple density because it's located on a arterial road, it's close proximity to schools and parks. The proposed empty detached dwelling would be compatible in appearance and massing with the surrounding single detached and converted dwellings. The current zoning on the property is a transitional residential multiple TRM zone. This is basically a holding category until such a time as future re-intensification or redevelopment of the property occurs. Typically, we try and encourage renovation of properties, but this property is actually isolated by virtue of the previous approvals in the south. The requested R2 residential, single and two-family zone will provide for a dwelling which is compatible with the area. The detached dwelling requirements can be satisfied, with exception of law. Firstly, they are seeking permission for lots of use, as I mentioned, though the lot is quite large, at 7,500 square feet. Because the property has previously been allowed to be a cottage rental dwelling, council have previously allowed for an intensified use of this land, we see the duplexes being a similar or like use. The applicant has indicated no longer wishing to have the cottage rental dwelling in this property or as a use on these lands, and so we bring back the bylaw for the other two properties. We will not be including this property in the bylaw. The application is, does comply with the official plan, is a location where we expect to find multiple unit dwellings. The zoning is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and therefore we're supporting the application. We're recommending that council approve the bylaw on the agenda tonight for a residential single family, a two-family, a double duplex. It will be approved for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlowich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referrals it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment other than the applicant? And once again, is there anyone present who would like to speak? Having seen none, at this time, we'll call on the applicant or his representative to come forward, please. Please be kind enough to identify yourself for the record.
My name is Vakar Beg, and I applied for this amendment. And as our respectable official explained it, the lot has quite a bigger size, like 7,500 square feet, and we want to build a beautiful duplex over there. So it is requested to amend the bylaws according to the application.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Beg? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Worship. I guess to yourself, to the speaker. Just wondering, the two-car garage, is that separated, or are they meant to share the two-car garage?
These are in one, one space. These are one space, but they might be used, one far upstairs, one far downstairs.
I see. And then, just wondering, where are the entrances are going to be?
It's on the side.
Both of them are going to be on the south side?
Not exactly on the south side, but next to the garages.
Next to the garage?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Beg? No other questions? Having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. In pleasure of council. Moved by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Diodati. Any comments or further comments at all? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Beg. Once again, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
The purpose of this public meeting is to receive information and allow the public to comment on the proposed Miller Road Estate's South Draft Plan of Subdivision located at Miller Road and west of the Niagara River Parkway. Notice was given in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, October 10th, 2008. Anyone who wants notice of the future meeting and/or decision of council shall leave their name and address on the sign and sheets outside the council chambers.
Thank you very much. And at this time, the applicant will provide an overview of the draft plan of subdivision, and council will hear from any persons wishing to comment on the plan. There will, however, be no decision made at tonight's meeting. Council will consider all input and a recommendation report from staff at a future meeting. So at this time, we're going to have the applicant come forward to provide an outline of the draft plan of subdivision.
Members of council, pleased to be here. This is a plan of subdivision that we've been working on for many, many years. I would point out that there is some neighbors here tonight, some of my neighbors, and they have concerns. Apparently, there's a real water problem at the, at the bottom of Miller Road. I don't sort of understand that. It's been an existing problem that they've had for some time. Of course, as you know, this land hasn't, nothing's happened to it. It's just sitting there idle, and it has been for about 75 years. What we're proposing is 12 building lots. It's 37 acres. They're about three acres apiece. I would point out that we've had our engineer Zach Alley produce a plan. The city helped us, actually, in producing a different plan than we originally had, and it's changed somewhat. He indicates to me that this plan, designing the plan, and it's such a great, actual flows of water will be less when the plan is registered, because it's going to be, of course, it'd be grading plans. This is a registered plan. It's not just people just going in to build houses. They have to build them according to a plan, and it will be graded accordingly. So he indicates to me that there will be less water coming from these lots than there is at the present time. So in other words, we will not exacerbate the situation on Miller Road. Also, he indicates to me quite clearly that Block 13 is unnecessary, and the Conservation Authority also has indicated it's unnecessary. My engineer, or my architect, surveyor, Mel Haywood, indicates it's not necessary. I think, I want Block 13, which is, which is going to be a stormwater management lot. I want it because in case there is a problem, in case there is a problem, there's Block 13. In other words, this is extra protection for the neighbors that really everybody says isn't necessary. I think it is necessary, and I've included it in the subdivision. I've worked with the city to incorporate it. We've got a long way, we've still got a ways to go on this thing, of course. I'm prepared to answer any questions. The neighbors, Darrell, Darrell Selman. Darrell Selman indicates in a letter to the city, which was delivered today, that there's a real problem down at the end of Miller Road. Apparently, the culvert there is only eight inches wide. It's collapsed. There's some problems with it. He indicates that at the end of Marshall Road, there's a 36-inch culvert. There's no problems. So I think Mr. Selman maybe has the answer to the, of the, of the problem that now exists, just the way it is, something that should be solved. In other words, probably a larger culvert should go in at the end of Miller Road, and suggesting, he's really stating that it should be a 36-inch culvert rather than an eight-inch culvert, because there is a lot of water down there. Sure, I don't doubt, one minute his, his, his letter. I think there is a problem down there. I live across the road, and I can see it down there, that there is definitely a water problem. And the neighbors are here. It's just, it's just almost too bad that this wasn't brought to council some time ago, because they, you obviously don't know about it. And the city, I don't think, has really been totally aware of it, although they did last year have a pipe going across the road, but apparently that hasn't alleviated the problem. So anyways, I just simply say that we're prepared to work with the city, obviously, work with, work with the neighbors and make this thing work properly, and try to alleviate their problems at the same time. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sinclair. Are there any questions of Mr. Sinclair as a developer? Okay. At this time, then, anyone wishing to comment on the plan, we're going to ask them to come forward. And those speaking are asked to give their name and address before offering comments. As required by the Planning Act, please be advised that failure to make an oral submission at this public meeting or a written submission prior to council approving or refusing the plan may result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing an appeal that you may file against the decision of council. So I'm going to ask for anyone wishing to come forward to please address council, and you're welcome to make your comments. Please come forward.
We have the mores.
Yeah, we have them. Thank you.
I thought it had.
Please, for the net record, just identify yourself.
Sure. My name's Darrell Selman. I live at 2505 Miller Road, and that is the first house going up Miller Road on the north-hand side. It was, I believe, we'll have to check with Brian, but the first house that was built in the original property development Brian Sinclair had done. Years ago, when the property was done, there has been a culvert underneath the Niagara Parkway for a time period of about 45 years. When there was no homes up that part of Miller Road, it was farm property. Farm property would flood, and it would drain over two, three, four weeks, and that, I imagine, would be fine. But what happens, and has happened over the past several years, and I really dread going forward, what, what, what will happen with the additional 12 homes without proper floodwater management. The first home that was built, you know, water took its time getting to the ditch. You know, the city imposes these guidelines for swales and clearances between homes, but unfortunately, Miller Road was never dealt with, you know, in terms of drains to the Niagara River. The second, third, fourth, fifth home went up, and as you can see from, from the indication here, my first property, there's a, where it says land, the ND would be my lot. The lot that is a triangle to the right of that, exactly right there, that's about 6.5 acres. Between the months of November and December, in addition to my lot, and there, actually there is, can I have, who is the pointer? I just, can I borrow that? Read from here? Because I did put another map on it. I just wanted to show. Let's see. Okay. We'll shake a little bit. I'm not used to talking out in public like this, but just follow the bouncing ball if you would. Okay. So, so here's my home right, right here. The water that initiates 90% of the problem down here at the culvert is not at all, at this point, associated with this development. When you read the literature that I've put together, 90% of the water is incurred between these five lots. This lot here, these two, matter of fact, as I'm shaking, those two lots, water drains this direction. Each of these lots is 3.3 acres. So we have about 15 acres of land draining only into this ditch. In the backside of these two lots, there's probably, believe it or not, about three or four acres that drain to the back of the property, because that's simply the lay of the land. But right in here, there's swales that all bring this water forward, okay? You've seen by the photographs that I've submitted, these images, I mean, they're not far, far-reaching by any means. This happens year in, year out, that the flooding comes down this ditch here and literally backs up. This fellow here, which this lot, by the way, has been vacant and for sale, started at $70,000, went up to $340,000, and it's now at $1,000,200. It is nothing but swamp, truthful. I mean, I'll walk through there any time between November and May. Matter of fact, I put mosquito insecticide in here to the tone of probably $200 a year. The culverts here, what happens is, because this is vacant land, leaves and sticks all do really the damnedest job to keep these things clean. But between here, the, the ditches do fill in, and along this property here. It's been reported in the preliminary report that leaves and sticks, they should be removed, and the city staff will come by and clean up the leaves, and as well, do more studies on this. But the problem exists. There is a culvert here, and it isn't eight inches. It is, indeed, 16 inches. The city had come in and evacuated it because it was backing up, and it was brought to our attention that the interior, the part right underneath the Parkway, and there's four other connections to connect to this pipe, has been reduced merely to eight inches. Around the foundation of your homes, it's code to have a four-inch pipe. Today's proposal is to drain 37 acres plus 12 acres here, a total roughly of 55 acres of water brought to the ditch, much more accelerated than a natural land without homes, to go through an eight-inch pipe or even that of a 16-inch pipe. So the proposal is asking us to take all this extra water. I will tell you, as a resident here for the past six years, I've had to, and what I put in here, I've had to cancel weekends and Sunday dinners because of the water flow. That's, that's truthful. And when there is runoff, that's what we have. There's ice dams. It's not so much the leaf. Right now, it is a little bit of leaves. We'll rake them out, that'll be fine. But when spring runoff comes along, the leaves are long gone, or they're mulched, and they're dirt, and, and that's not the issue. Then it turns into some ice and slush. Not big ice dams, as, as I kind of indicate. You know, I take an axe and I chop things up to keep it flowing. But the problem I'm having trouble with is that now we are going to support 17 homes, five here, 12 here. I look forward to the subdivision, to be honest with you. The very first home that's being built in the north subdivision has a couple of kids. I have two young children at home. There's no children at here at all. So I look forward to the subdivision, but I mean, on Marshall Road, down here, the very last page, there is a 36-inch culvert. The water flowing through that a week ago today, you couldn't even stand at the end of that culvert, it would have pushed you out. Leaves, sticks, debris, it would have snapped, pushed away. When you have a straw, as I mentioned here, we're all tired of using our property as storm management water systems. When you have a straw, six-inch, eight-inch, at the end, or a 16-inch culvert, reduced now to an eight-inch, it's not doing the job. The city, you know, or the officials, I don't know what party it is, whether Mr. Sinclair is partly, you know, is developing, he's responsible for, or will contribute to the cost to fix it. I think he's expressed some strong concern that, he knows there's problems. He's lived there for years. I wave to him every day. I'm out there digging away, and he's, and he's seen the water, as well as you folks have as well. So he's very much aware of it. And I don't think the proposal, the way it's going to go through now, I spoke with a couple of people at City Hall today, they said, we'll bring perhaps some recommendations. I'm not an engineer. I could tell you how to sail around the world, I can't tell you how to drain ditches. The issues that I would have, some of the concerns, perhaps, would be right down in here, going along, this is a bush, I've walked this today. And by the way, this piece of property here is a vacant motel. It does have, here's a motel that has a concrete culvert, about 18 or 20 inches, just to drain the motel, albeit it's probably 40 or 50 years old. But I mean, this fellow's not experiencing water troubles. This 16-inch culvert here really needs to be rectified and has to go. I mean, there's not a person in this room. If you lived in that house or along that street, you know, I'm pretty serious. If you lived in that house or along that street, you know, I'm pretty serious about this, I'm fairly emotional about it because I've spent hundreds of hours cleaning. But there's nobody in this room who would want to be in the situation. That's without, without a doubt.
Thank you very much, Mr. Selman. I appreciate it. Do we have some questions of members of council? So councillor Kerrio?
Thank you, worship. To our engineering department, if they're without this subdivision, what are we going to do about the water, or what can be done? Because living out there, I know that there's nothing else the city gives us but water drainage. There's no water, there's no sewer, there's no, so let's try and help them get rid of the water.
May I add that this part of Miller Road has the largest amount, and I believe this, you know, from the area, the amount of drop or the amount of fall that water has to travel is the highest on all Willoughby Township. You can't stop the water once it starts to come along. I took pictures last year after the two culverts had been replaced. Nice gesture, but 10% of the south side ditch, that water, I mean, you'll see a picture. There was two inches of water in that the other day. The north side of the ditch, it was 30 inches deep. My children are there, the septic systems are there. I have one area where a new septic system has gone in, you know, one of the neighbors. It would be, and it's a raised bed, but it would be completely surrounded. And all of our systems out there are just failing due to the inadequate update of the road.
Okay, let's see if we can get a comment from Mr. Holman.
Mr. Mayor, the comments that Mr. Selman raised are accurate.
Yes.
We've been working with the residents to try and resolve the issue without having to make a huge capital expenditure, but we do have to do some work there, involves some negotiations with the Niagara Parks Commission. We'll need to get approvals from the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, Conservation Authority, and Minister of Environment. So it's not something that we can simply send a crew out there on Monday to do that type of work. There will be significant investments that have to be made in the engineering side of things. But I think the point that needs to be clarified is that if this development were to proceed, and as part of our process, we ask to match pre-development flows and with the post-development flows, we'll still have the problems that we have today. So it really is an item that needs to be dealt with, possibly even at this budget time, to get some direction to deal with this issue. It's an old culvert that was probably put in there to drain the unopened road allowance at the time, but now some development has been allowed to proceed, and some grading has changed in that area. It's a large drainage area that needs to, to move a lot of water through that area, and it, it really needs to be addressed very, very soon.
Councillor Kerrio?
Thank you, worship. The other problem we have in the area, as we all know, is that most of the ditches in that area are overgrown. There's trees and rushes and bushes right up through all the ditches. A lot of the ditches out in that area are, are in need of cleaning as well, even back past there, Marshall Road, Shirk Road, a lot of the ditches are overgrown too.
You know, the one thing about those particular roads, Mr. Carroll, is, and I hear what you're saying, and you're right, ours were dug last year. There's a house and then a third of a kilometer down the road, or Marshall, where you have a 36-inch culvert. There's two houses between Willoughby Drive, or, I'm sorry, three houses, and I don't, I'm not even sure whether the, the land goes that way. But I know there is one house there, and what we have currently is going to take care of 17. It's, it's just unfeasible. We have four-inch pipes around the foundations of our home to keep us dry. There is 219,000 acres, square feet, and an average square house footage is 4,000 square feet. Do the math, and we need 45, the equivalent of 45, four-inch pipes. And I'm not, you know, I'm not an engineer, and I, I'm sure that that's overkill. But I just believe that the 16-inch, we live it, everybody along here has spent, I mean, if we don't, as a community, spend 200 hours in our ditches a year, it's without a doubt, it's, it's a sad, sad state of affairs.
We hear your log, Clarence Selman. Thank you very much. So let's see if there's anyone else who'd like to express their concern as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone other than Mr. Selman as well who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
Sandy Morlato, I have two properties, 2462 and 2482 Miller Road. I respect what the gentleman said over here about Niagara Parks Commission. 2004, we wrote letters to the regional Niagara Parks Commission and the city. Niagara Parks Commission responded and said they will cooperate with the city to do the culvert underneath the parkway. What's happening?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For Holman, any further comment? Have you got any correspondence from the Parks Commission at all?
With respect to dealing with the Parks Commission, they've been fair to deal with. We have to go through a proper easement. The problem here is that we have to establish a new outlet. Because of the, the elevation or the height of the river and the height of the road, there isn't a lot of clearance to put in a large diameter pipe, so we have to look at possibly even establishing a new outlet and, and providing two pipes. We really have to investigate this further before we can go ahead, and quite frankly, since I'm dealing with Mr. Morlato in 2004, we haven't, haven't put funds in the budget for this particular project.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak to this matter? Once again, is there anyone else who'd like to go forward to speak to this matter? Okay, and having seen none, the public meeting for the draft plan of subdivision is now concluded. I'd like to have a motion to refer the comments received at the public meeting to staff for consideration in their review of the draft plan of subdivision. Moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Thompson. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all of us in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Once again, I'm going to ask the clerk to introduce the next item and the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of condominium at 7591 Schofield Road. Notice was not required under the Planning Act, but was given as a courtesy to the existing residents on Friday, October 24th, 2008. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Once again, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose of the application. Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, worship. As the clerk has outlined, not an mandatory meeting, it's a courtesy meeting being provided to the residents in this townhouse. It's a townhouse rental project with 30 units. The, look ahead here, the north, the end of Newberg Road, back on the high go quarters of Schofield Road. The, and the proposal here is that the owners wish to convert this to condominium ownership. Quite often, this is done for tax purposes or for investment purposes to allow the various investors to own certain of the unit. On occasions, they're allowed, they also are offered for sale, and I know that was proposed here. The, the proposal is we have a policy that says that we can't convert rental properties in the city of Niagara Falls when the vacancy rate is below 3%. The latest statistics we have are culverts in 2007, that indicates the vacancy rate for the city of Niagara Falls, the townhouse unit, is 6.9%. The vacancy rate is actually higher than 3%. Therefore, the ability to convert this development to condominium would be appropriate. I don't have anything further to add, as far as the justice of the consent here from members of this public and the representative of the county.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. Are there any questions from members of council or Mr. Hurlovich at this point? Okay, at this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the draft plan of condominium. I'd like you to come forward, please, and please state your name and address. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to come forward? Once again, is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to come forward? Having seen none, at this time, the council will hear from the applicant or his representative. Good evening.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. My name is Jennifer Ricci. I'm agent four, the owner of 7591 Schofield Road, Panoramic Properties. I'm here.
Could you, could you spell your last name, please?
R-I-C-C-I.
Thank you.
I'm here this evening with the architect for the property, Michael D. Allen. Should any questions be required, they could be also canvassed to him. I'm here just to let you know that the purpose, people often ask, or members of council may be wondering why we are making this application for condominium conversion. Specifically, Panoramic Properties is a, an organization that owns apartment complexes as well as condominium complexes across the province. They are a triple-tier apartment manager, property manager, and if anyone here is familiar with the property, unfortunately, 7591 before Schofield Road, before May 31st, was not a triple, a triple-A property. And that is what the intention of the owner, the intention of the owner is to create it into a triple-A property. They are converting it into a condominium for the purposes of ensuring that in the future there would be ongoing maintenance because there are maintenance requirements set into the condominium act that require that ongoing maintenance to occur. There is no intention at this time to sell any of the units to third parties. So the tenants have, not only has the owner reassured the tenants by way of a pre-hearing public meeting, of which all members of council were invited to attend, that units, at this time, there's no intention to sell the units, but there are also protections built into the Residential Tenancies Act, which ensure security of tenure. So basically, from a provincial, when analyzing the zoning bylaw, when analyzing the official plan, when analyzing the provincial policy statements, this application is congruent with all of those policies, and we would like it, if possible, to be approved by council. Are there any questions? I could.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mrs. Ricci from members of council? No, I guess there isn't, so thank you very much. We appreciate that. Since there are no questions, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of condominium is now concluded, and as council wished to make a motion with regard to proposed draft plan of condominium. Councillor Thompson, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Maves. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all of us in favor? Motion is carried. Move on to miscellaneous planning matters. The first issue, our first matter is PD 2008-89, a revised infrastructure and streetscaping improvement program with the, within the historic Drummingville CIP area. Yes, councillor Wing? Councillor Wing moves recommendations as her second. Councillor Peter Angelo? Any discussion or comment? Having seen none, all of us in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is PD 2008-96, CV and figure 2008-18, revised facade and commercial improvement grant application for 4675 Queen Street. Mr. Dominic Musitano, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all of us in favor? Motion is approved. Thank you. Next item is PD 2008-92, review of the off-site parking for hotels within the city's tourist areas. Pleasure of council. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo as her second, or seconded by councillor Diodati. Any discussion or comment? Having seen none, all of us in favor? Motion is carried. Next item is PD-2008-94, pre-consultation on certain applications under the Planning Act. Moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Maves. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all of us in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. The last item is PD 2008-99, the appeal of committee of adjustment decisions consent application, B 2008-050, the applicant is Joe Keckich in the Art Road, Rexxner Road area. Yes, councillor Kerrio?
Someone to explain, is this, we're taking our own people to the OMB? Get a little explanation on this.
Sure. Mr. Hurlovich, could you address that, please?
Yes, worship, this is, councillor Kerrio is, is correct. The committee of adjustment granted a, a consent to sever a four-acre, or a two-acre parcel into two one-acre parcels against the recommendation of staff contrary to the provincial policy statements. It's contrary to the regional policy plan, it's contrary to the provincial vote plan, it's contrary to our official plan. So that, in fact, the action of, of the committee actually ignored all of the planning documents of this council. The, the recommendation is that we appeal this to the Ontario Municipal Board because it is, was not, I should have mentioned, it was also not supported by the region of Niagara. And so therefore, we feel that it sets a, a dangerous precedent for the division of land in the rural areas that's contrary to provincial, regional, municipal policies.
Yes, councillor Kerrio, does that answer your question?
Just seems, it seems kind of sad because they refer to this as prime agricultural land. This is one of those properties that we say out there, even the rabbits carry a lunch.
Yeah. Councillor Thompson?
Through the chair to Mr. Hurlovich. One of the elements that I thought here was, with my background, is, was there Health Department approval for this application? It's, it's an acre in size, which is, in my opinion, inadequate, especially when the rabbits have to carry their lunch because of the heavy soil. Did they have approval?
We didn't have anything on, on our, in our files regarding the approval for a septic
tank that would come at the building permit stage. So we, we didn't have.
I, I would think it would be prudent to, in a case like this, to insist, even at the committee of adjustment stage, to have an application approved by the Health Department because if you approve it, and then there isn't any approval for a septic tank system and a, and a private water system, there's not much you can do at that point.
Pleasure of council. Yes, councillor Wing? Moved by councillor Wing as her second to the motion. Councillor Thompson? Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All of us in favor? One, two, three, four, opposed? Sorry, five? You're opposed or supporting?
I'm supporting the motion.
Okay. Supported by five. We have a conflict declared by councillor Peter Angelo. Correct. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Move on to the mayor's report by candid members of council. I'd like to begin this evening by offering condolences to Mr. Jim Winjack of the city's Information Systems Department on the recent passing of his father, also to Velvia White, an arena employee on the loss of her mother, Avira White, and the family of Rose Morris. Rose was a longtime city employee in the clerk's office, she passed away this past weekend. We offer our thoughts and our sympathy to your families as you deal with your loss. I'd like to advise residents of some recent notable events in our community as well. We were pleased that we could host the local health integration network in our council chambers for the public board meeting last Tuesday, and during the meeting, Dr. Jack Kitz presented his recommendations to the LIN board, and as we know, at this time, no decisions have been made by the LIN. We will wait to the LIN's final report and decisions at the end of this month. I was also pleased to join Principal Todd Bright, teachers, students, and families to celebrate the official opening of the new Forestview Public School in the west end of Niagara Falls. It was a pleasure to see the energy and excitement at this wonderful new school in our city, and we certainly wish students and teachers much success during this, their inaugural year. It was a pleasure to honor the great many volunteers in our community this last week at our Volunteer Recognition Awards evening at Club Italia, hosted by our Parks, Recreation and Culture Division. These volunteers are the people that we see at every event in our community. They help in a variety of ways, giving back to those who live in our city on a regular basis. I was so pleased to congratulate all of our great volunteers, and especially to present the volunteer awards to very deserving people of Niagara Falls. Last week also marked the award ceremony for the Schools in Bloom competition. I'd like to thank Parks, Recreation, Culture, and Partnership with our Niagara Falls schools that participated in this exciting event. This year's Schools in Bloom winners were the students at St. Paul High School, and I was pleased to congratulate them alongside councillor Peter Angelo, who continues to be very active in his support of this wonderful initiative. Respected members of our art community in Niagara Falls were honored this weekend at the annual Arts and Culture Wall of Fame induction ceremony. I was pleased to acknowledge the many contributions made to arts and culture in Niagara Falls. It is exciting to give credit to the people that are working diligently to promote and instill artistic and creative values among the residents of our city. Coming up, we have some very important events taking place that are Coming up, we have some very important events taking place that I'd like to share with all of you. On Tuesday, November 11th, the city of Niagara Falls will host its annual Remembrance Day ceremony. It will take place at the Niagara Falls Arena. We ask that attendees arrive promptly for 10:30 a.m. And I invite members of council, members of the community, to join us for this annual ceremony that pays tribute to our veterans, to our soldiers, and to those who gave their lives for our freedom. As well, I was pleased to celebrate this past weekend's Remembrance Day ceremony with residents of Chippewa hosted by the Legion Branch 396. Again, I remind all Niagara City residents that all are welcome to join us during the November 11th ceremonies at the Niagara Falls Memorial Arena. Each year, we look forward to the opening of the Winter Festival of Lights, and this year's kickoff will take place this weekend, Saturday, November 8th. There will be an exciting celebration in the park, and the lights will be officially switched on just before 6:30 p.m. I encourage residents and visitors to view the light displays and this year's even better Festival of Lights. The annual Memorial Matthew Daniele fundraiser is being, taking place on November 14th at John Michael Hall. We're always pleased to support this hugely successful fundraising and community event. I look forward to seeing a wonderful turnout and a show of support from citizens and members of our community that evening. On Saturday, November 15th, as well is the 1812 Bicentennial Gala. The War of 1812 Bicentennial Committee will host this event at the Americana Resort. As you heard earlier, tickets are $50 and can be purchased by contacting the Lundys Lane Historical Museum. The proceeds will go towards the exciting 1812 Museum Legacy Project. I encourage community members as well to continue to support the ongoing United Way luncheons taking place at various locations throughout the city now and in the coming weeks. The luncheons have been marked, marked success again this year, and we look forward to seeing many more of you out to support the United Way of Niagara. And before moving on with the agenda this evening, I'd like to take a moment to thank Mr. John McDonald, City of Niagara Falls CAO. John has retired and completed 30 years plus a career with the city of Niagara Falls last week. We were pleased to thank and congratulate John on his many achievements throughout his career. During the competition and hiring process for a new CAO, I am pleased to inform residents that directors Ed Dulovic and Ken Burden will perform the duties of acting CAO on a rotating basis. We look forward to a timely and successful process for the hiring of a new CAO. And I want to thank you for allowing me to make these comments this evening. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I always appreciate when you bring up the NHS in your remarks so we can make our comments a little earlier rather than waiting until the end of the council meeting. I have to say without exception how disappointed I was personally, and I'm sure a lot of people in the community with respect to the report that was delivered by Dr. Kitz with respect to the ongoing debate with respect to health services within Niagara region. I want to thank the clerk, first of all, for providing some documentation with respect to, and I've made this comment on numerous occasions, about how long this has been going on. And I would appreciate if maybe the clerk would send this documentation out to the rest of the members of council. I know it's voluminous, but it's extremely important, and it shows that this issue with respect to the hospital, the location of the hospital, and the handling of these issues by the NHS has been going on. The first correspondence I have in the minutes of this council go back to the 18th of February '02. And as worship, Mayor Thompson, I remember him, referred to the correspondence received from the Niagara Medical Society strongly opposing the proposed moving of the pediatric inpatient service from the Greater Niagara General Hospital to St. Catherine's General Hospital, and further that the closure would have significant impact on the provisions of full services at the Greater Niagara General Hospital. That's in 2002. The situation goes on. On April 8th, as worship, Thompson referred to Mr. John Carter's recent presentation at the regional council meeting indicating that under the Niagara Health System proposal at that time, the government would spend $325 million on refurbishing old hospitals, and that $400 million would build a brand-new state-of-the-art superhospital that could be centrally located. And that was Mr. Carter's submission on numerous occasions to this council, to the regional council, and others. And, you know, we were in the same situation where people were pointing fingers, fingers at us down here, saying, "Look, there they go again. They can't cooperate. Look at the parochialism. Look at all the problems we have because of Niagara Falls." We were not asking for a hospital to be located in the city of Niagara Falls. And in fact, a letter sent out on April 29th from the city here, signed by me, to the Health Minister, asking him to consider the location of a superhospital centrally located so that all of us in the region, and when I talk about all of us, this council endorsed the resolution, saying we would very happily participate in having a centrally-located hospital. We would have our emergency here, plus other facilities would be moved to the, to the new hospital. I want to read this paragraph in the letter. "I consider healthcare to be the most important issue facing Canadians. Although I applaud any upgrades to the area hospital, I was taken by Mr. Carter's comments. He felt that a more forward-thinking step would be to create a new state-of-the-art hospital that is centrally-located in the Niagara region." So it goes on and on, indicating that this council is very supportive, not of having a hospital located within our boundaries, but having one that is state-of-the-art, centrally-located. And as a result of all of these, and I'm not going to go through all of this, we'd be here for the rest of the night. But you should have a look at the resolution that were passed by this council with respect to this issue. So all of a sudden, we have somebody putting a HIP plan forward in the last few months, and everybody's surprised about what's in the plan. It shouldn't be no surprise. We knew what it was back in 2002 and what they were trying to propose at this particular time. I have a presentation made here, October 6, 2003, by Dr. Orfirske, who gave a powerful presentation. In fact, reading emails today of his comments of what, what happened with the Kitz report is truly alarming. This all started, of course, with the deficit of $18 million a year with the NHS and not being able to control their spending, and now having $100 million in accumulated deficit and the future not being very positive with respect to that. In fact, even in Mr. Kitz's remarks, Dr. Kitz's remarks, he indicates that it isn't going to solve the problem of the deficit, and it isn't going to solve the problem that exists with respect to the balancing of the budget. I was, I listened and read Dr. Kitz's comments right from the first time that he was appointed, and I had really no faith in, in anything happening other than what happened. And I was really annoyed at the fact that Mr. Classen with the Ontario Hospital Association got his nose stuck in here, indicating how much he supports the, the Kitz report and the NHS. And I doubt very much whether he's even been to the area. I doubt very much whether he knows of 12,000 signatures of people in the city of Niagara Falls opposing it, not talking about the meetings that were held in, in the rest of the region. But Mr. Classen, I can just see him getting out, "Hey, Jack, just wanted to talk to you for a couple of minutes. I guess if you sent me anonymous comments saying how well things are going with our report, that'll really be great." You know, that's really annoying to think that somebody would, with that kind of authority, suggest that this is a wonderful thing. It may be a wonderful thing to sit up in Toronto and make those comments. It certainly doesn't help important healthcare in the city of Niagara Falls and the Niagara region. The transportation issue has never been addressed, was not addressed by, by Dr. Kitz and his report. There was no consideration about the doctors and their condemnation of the NHS leadership. And they all voted to look at a new location, all of the, all of the doctors with the exception of the ones from St. Catherine's, who really, what, what else could they, could they do? So here we have a $700 million mistake that is going to happen, and certainly we're going to be the ones who suffer as a result of it. The, the idea and the mindset that it can't be moved to another site is, is truly amazing. Anything could be moved regardless of, of the situation. I have to say that when you believe passionately in something, and I've heard and read Doug Herod's comments in the St. Catherine Standard, get on with it, grow up, get over it, don't be parochial, we've heard all of that before. But when you believe that there is a serious mistake being made that is going to affect healthcare for the next 50 years, you don't roll over and play dead just because somebody reads out a plan that has been prepared. This is, without exception, in my opinion, one of the most crucial issues, and I was astute enough to identify that even before I got on council, that healthcare and transportation are without exception the two, the two major issues. I was surprised with your comments in the paper. Well, you know, the decision has been made, we've got the report, let's get on with it and join hands, and everything's going to be fine. Well, at least you've been consistent. You've always been against the suggestions, suggestion of a centralized hospital. I have in the correspondence, December 10th, 2004, when I wasn't here, apparently there was some discussions with other mayors with respect to the hospital issue and the location. And Mr. Ira Fida had to write a letter to the Health Minister on December 1st. Our mayor, as worship, Mayor Ted Selsey, along with his counterparts from St. Catherine's and Welland, met with you to discuss the future of the hospital in the Niagara region. The city council appreciates our mayor's working cooperatively with his colleagues. However, they feel that the message you may have received is counter to their past resolutions since 1992. And there was a motion made and a vote of eight to one indicating that the council retains its original position of trying to have a centrally-located hospital. Now, you look at the report, and wasn't it nice? Dr. Kitz threw a bone to Ford Erie and a bone to Port Colborne, really, in my opinion, temporarily, because you can see after they get going, they're going to have their emergencies open 24 hours, and then, oh, the budget's too, we're in too much of a deficit, cut that out, we can't do that anymore. So I hope they're not getting sucked in up in Port Colborne and Ford Erie because that's the, that's going to be the case. You know, if it wasn't so, you know, we were asking for maternity, I wouldn't mind if they had have made a decision and said, "Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna consider all of the unrest in Niagara Falls." Well, you know, I like watching the TV program on TV, but I sure as hell don't like being the biggest loser. And that's what we are in the city of Niagara Falls. We got absolutely nothing from it. It's going to be a disastrous situation. The committee, and I'm sorry that Counselor Iononi is not here tonight because I'm sure that she'd be taking part of the role that I'm, I'm utilizing tonight. We want to make it extremely clear that we didn't just make up this idea about what would be good for healthcare. There was a lot of study, a lot of research, the doctors. Why wouldn't you listen to what the doctors have to say? The doctors are the experts in this field. They know what they're talking about. They know how it's going to impact on the hospital, and nobody knows what's going to happen, the residents of this city, the impact of this decision if it goes through the way it is on their healthcare. We're going to have an emergency ward and a long-term care facility in the city of Niagara Falls. I remember sitting here on numerous occasions, getting calls in 19, or in 2002 and before with people senior calling me, "We're 80 years old. We don't have a license anymore. We can't drive. And yet, they've moved dialysis from the city of Niagara Falls up to St. Catherine's. How are we supposed to get there?" And I had, I didn't have an answer for them. So this has been going on for years where people have been shifted to services out of the area. So what do you, how do you tell somebody? Well, you've got to get a cab, while we can't afford a cab, to go back and forth two or three times a week? So anyway, this, this whole thing is, is becoming a disaster. I'm delighted to hear from Dr. Orfirske, Dr. Deck, other people on the committee, saying that, "Don't let this thing go. We are not giving up. We were right in our decisions in the first place, and we want to make sure we continue with the, the situation." The fire services, mentioned by the chief a few weeks ago, is also another major issue that, that certainly hasn't been addressed. Was I surprised with the report? Absolutely not. I knew it was coming, and I, I'm just very sad that this has happened. And after, I know Counselor Wing and probably Diodati want to make a comment, but I want to make sure that we, as a council, again, indicate our support for the committee and ask them to continue on fighting on behalf of the residents of the city. And I can tell you, I'm not going to roll over and play dead on something as important as this. It's going to affect 50 years of healthcare in this community. It's unfair. I think that this council has gone on record of saying, "Build it in St. Catherine's, build it in Thorold, make sure it's centrally-located, build the best hospital possible, and make sure everybody has equal access to it." We didn't resolve the maternity, maternity issue for Ford Erie. They're still going to have to go up to, to St. Catherine's if this thing continues on. So we're just beginning to fight. They may laugh at us. They may say, "You're being parochial, you're being uncooperative." We're being uncooperative because we've been fighting this since early '02, and we haven't changed their mind. Nobody's told us anything that has resolved the problem. And I'll make a motion after to enforce the committee.
Counselor Wing?
Very good.
Counselor Wing, order, please. Counselor Wing?
I guess I'm going to try and build on Counselor Thompson's comments, and I'm doing a try and pinch hit for Counselor Iononi. She was on the phone to me about three or four times today. She's up at a conference in Toronto related to this issue. She asked me to highlight several things from Dr. Kitz's report. He admits that the NHS's hospital improvement plan will not resolve the NHS's financial crisis. In fact, it will require additional investments in capital and operations. So this was all about trying to get their financial house in order. It's going worse the other way instead of improving it. The hospital improvement plan, as Dr. Kitz notes, identifies two key community enablers, transportation and primary care. I was at the Transportation Strategy Steering Committee meeting back in the summer when Dr. Schrag came and said he was very, he was delighted to be beginning this dialogue about intermunicipal transportation and called it an absolutely critical enabler. However, the, I don't know where Carolyn got the figure approximately $60 million for intermunicipal transportation, but there is no intermunicipal transportation in place. There are no resources currently to provide it. This doesn't meet the LIN's feasibility, readiness, and resources criteria. And apparently, the LIN had an information booklet that they handed out on page two spoke of evidence-based decision-making, and among the, there was data and evidence, attitudes, value and preferences, feasibility, readiness, and resources. Those were a key area. We're not anywhere near that. Another thing she asked me to highlight is, the, Dr. Kitz has written, "The NHS currently has an RNRPN vacancy rate of 8.6% and is struggling to recruit nurses, physicians, and key health professionals." Well, of course, they've been under censure by the Ontario Nurses Association for quite a while, so that explains the difficulty in retaining nurses. And... And since then, of course, the Niagara Medical Society has rendered a vote of non-confidence in the NHS. So the doctors, as well as the nurses now, have spoken very clearly that they don't have confidence in the NHS. Dr. Kit's notes that morale's low, no big surprise there. The NHS has little public support. Members of the community and stakeholder organizations express a loss of trust in the NHS leadership and have deep concerns regarding the Hospital Improvement Plan. This loss of trust preceded the presentation of the HIP. Dr. Kit's notes, the NHS leadership does not have the public trust necessary to implement the HIP. So not only is it not going to save any money, in fact, it's going to cost a lot of money to implement. They don't even have the public trust necessary to implement it. And Carolyn said that this is crucial. He says on page 11, the NHS had previously described that new healthcare complex is a local hospital for the communities of St. Catherine's, Thorold and Niagara Lake. And I know I have heard that as well. However, with its original regional services and the proposed changes outlined in the HIP, the new healthcare complex is clearly a regional site. So Dr. Kit's now is saying, this is a regional site. And of course, we have in the past said, we support a regional hospital in a centralized location, not in the location this is going in. And of course, under the Hospital Improvement Plan, as Carolyn noted, St. Catherine's will be the only community in the region with a full-service hospital. Just trying to make sure I've covered everything here, but basically what it comes down to is you've got the doctors, the nurses, the public, all saying, this is broken, the system's broken, we have no confidence in it. You have the NHS coming forward with a plan that's supposed to save money, instead it's going to cost more and they can't, and there's just no way they can implement it. They don't have the critical enablers in place, the resources aren't there, the public support's not there. I think what it comes down to is we need to send a resolution to the province, Premier McGinty, MP Kim Crater, of course, George Smitherman, Ford Erie, Port Coburn mayors, the Ontario Nurses Association, the doctors. But the resolution should be that we request the province to dismantle the Niagara health system and to appoint a provincial supervisor. And this would be, this is not something unusual. Scarborough had a provincial supervisor, I believe Brampton, there's a lot of communities in Ontario that have had to have this happen because their health systems have been broken, just as ours is. So my resolution is that the province dismantle the NHS and appoint a provincial supervisor.
Is there a second to that? Counselor Diadaddy, want to speak to it?
Yes, Your Worship, and I just want to thank my fellow councillors for all the work they've done. Ironically, Councillor Iononi is at a conference in Toronto where she was listening to Dr. Schrag to give a talk on accountability and transparency, on that somewhat humorous. Anyway, there's no question, once we listened and first listened to Dr. Kit's report, but more importantly, we read it. And once we read it, we realized there was much more substance to it that we did not divulge than what he did divulge. And he did reference that it wasn't part of his mandate to discuss the location, however, he clearly discusses the location in his report. He clearly illustrates that it is a regional hospital, that it is not centrally located, that there is a lot of distrust and that we do not have a working relationship. He also says that we must have a collaborative working relationship with the community for the Hospital Improvement Plan to succeed. That's not going to change. The community is not going to change. We're here to stay. And I agree with the suggestion that the NHS needs to be the ones to go. I think the first time you do something wrong, you lose someone's trust, is the hardest. After that, it becomes progressively easier. It seems that it's become something habitual in the NHS to lead us in directions. We say Machiavellian, they take us down a different path all the time for their own benefit and we kind of, quite frustrating. It's obvious right now that there's something to divide and conquer. We throw a couple of bones to Ford Erie and Port Coburn, get them off our back temporarily, take down Niagara Falls, then we'll take care of those guys after the fact. And it's quite obvious the strategy that's working. The problem is there isn't trust, there isn't belief, the community is holding tight to their wallets now because of the atmosphere that's been created. Quite honestly, I think the NHS needs a checkup from the neck up. And I will, I'm happy to second this resolution. And we need to get the attention, the premier talks about financial constraints right now in the province, a lot of things need to be cut back. And here we have an unwilling community saying, listen, we're not ready to spend our money yet. There's a shortfall, we haven't identified where money's coming from and it's happening for all the wrong reasons. It's not in the interest of better healthcare, not in the interest of fiduciary responsibility. It's a bad decision. You're never too far down the wrong road to turn around. The money has not been spent. Yeah, there's going to be some money lost, but I'd rather see us make a little error in spending than a massive error that our children and our children's children will be paying for, for a long, long time, as Councillor Thompson said, 50 years. So no question, he has spoken and there's much more support for our position than originally we had thought. And again, happy, very happy to support this resolution because we're certain.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
I'm just wondering if Councillor Wing and Diadaddy would elaborate further on that round, it's a resolution to disband the NHS. I think there should be some comments in there about the location, the central location, the HIP plan. And also, I'd like to include a resolution of support for the ongoing of the committee, which is extremely important.
I'd consider those friendly amendments.
Clerk, can you get that information? Okay. We'll call the vote, all those in favor.
I'd like to have one comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Just as a matter of interest, too, while we're talking about the centralization of the hospital, this evening we heard from a consultant from Niagara Transit that St. Catherine's is pretty much filled up with their population and that Niagara Falls, probably in the next 10 years, our population will be 110,000. So I'm thinking that possibly, we're going to be more central in Niagara Falls and more population here and more growth and new young families coming this way. So I think really, that's another thing we can stress, too, is the fact that we are probably going to be the central location. So just another point I thought I'd bring out.
Okay. Thank you. We'll call the vote, all those in favor. The motion's carried, thank you. Move on to the next item on the agenda, the communications and comments from the city clerk. Any additional items, Mr. Clerk, for the consideration?
You have it up.
Okay, all right. All right, good. First item, we have dealt with members of council with regard to the Niagara Falls arena and a charity hockey game. The second item is the Municipal Engineers Association requesting a grant to offset the fees of the ice time and bus rental. Council's consideration. Pleasure, council. We have a recommendation. Moved by Counselor Maves, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Diadaddy. Any comments or discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried, thank you. Number three, the Optus Club of Niagara Falls requesting that the week of November 16th to 22nd be proclaimed as Youth Appreciation Week in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further discussions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried. Number four, Winter Festival Lights requesting approval for fireworks display in association with this year's festival. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadaddy. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor. The motion's carried. City of Kingston requesting support to petition the province to increase the heads and beds levy under section 323 of the Municipal Act. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Yes, Counsel Wing.
I'm just wondering what we get from Niagara College for their Maid of the Mist campus in way of payments? Because it says in the interdepartment memo dated October 6th, in Ten Burden's at John McDonald, that the city of Niagara Falls annually receives X amount for beds and no funds for heads. So I remember asking this question once before and being told, well, you know, there's this heads and beds thing and we get funded that way. Well, if we're not getting any funds for heads from Niagara College, then what are we getting from them? Because they're renting that out as business, commercial space, and they're deriving a pretty healthy rental income from it. Are they just walking away with any of all that money? Or are we getting anything from them?
Okay. Mr. Harrison, could you answer that question for Counsel Wing?
Off the top of my head, I'd have to investigate that and get back to you on specifically what they're paying at that property.
Okay. Could you please?
Certainly.
Okay. We'll expect that back, thank you. Meantime, we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Next item is the Ontario Federation of Labor requesting November 6th, 2008 be proclaimed as the Community Social Service Workers Appreciation Day. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Diadaddy. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried. Salvation Army requesting a flag raising on November 21st for the Salvation Army Day. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Number eight, the Teachers of English as a Second Language Association of Ontario requesting that the week of November 9th to 15th, 2008 be proclaimed as English as a Second Language Week. Moved by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Once again, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion's carried. Number nine, the Jeffrey Chapman requesting review of the parking permit system in parking area number 13.
Staff.
Refer to staff, moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Cario. Once again, any questions or comments? Yes, Counsel Wing.
Yeah, how long will this take for a report to come back from staff?
Excuse me, Mr. Dren, would you have any idea?
We're talking about four to six weeks.
Okay, so by the end of the year then we'll have this resolved. Yeah, you know, and I just find it really interesting, the comment that since parking was removed, cars are racing through there and vehicles were parked along the road, motors drove more cautiously and slower. And I've noted the same thing myself, the section of Barker I used to live on, when there were vehicles parked there, cars were slower. When they weren't parked there, they just sped on through. And having parking at the side of the road is the same thing as putting a chicane there, it slows people down. So I certainly agree with those comments. I've noticed the same thing myself.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor. Any opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Number 10, we have a request from Mr. Ron Herkimer requesting the relocation of two city parking terminals.
Yeah.
Moved by Counsel Maves, is there a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second it with a comment. You know, I had a look at this and I'm very familiar with the parking lot. I know we want a report back, but it's relatively simple to put one meter unit at one and one at the other end when you're, it's a big parking lot. Is there any reason why they're together?
Yes, Mr. Dren.
Through the mayor. Basically, they're together because of the amount of volume that comes in during the summertime period. Usually have lineups at the machines. And they're also together because usually people pull in, stop, grab their ticket and then park. We could put them at the other end and we'll have to look at whether it could be done and how quickly it could be done.
I'm sure you, what about the meter in front, can it be adjusted or move it away from his front door?
I think, again, we'll look at that. That was, that meter went in at the request of the Victoria Centre BIA. It's in the central location between the spaces, so the parking spaces, it's equally distance between where you go from one end to the other end. In reality, what we'd be doing is moving it to another location in front of somebody else's door.
Well, I don't think you have to put it in front of the door. I think that's what I'm asking you.
Okay.
Between the buildings, just move it over. I see now suggesting it be in front of it. I think when the report comes back, we probably realize the merits of the suggestions.
Again, if it's a simple just relocation, yes, we can do it and we won't require a report back on that issue.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor. Motion's carried, thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there additional items for council's consideration?
Yes, Your Worship, there's a handout that was also emailed to you on Friday. It's a request from the Downtown BIA for the installation of a ice skating rink. Number one, asking permission for use of city property, which would be Centennial Square. Also asking for some city involvement in this rink. There would be some cost to the city, staff's estimating about $40,000. There has been some informal discussion amongst staff taking that out of the Downtown CIP. There's still a lot of details to be ironed out on this. This is, the meeting happened relatively recently, but there is a desire to try to get something in place in time for Christmas. That's why we've brought the request forward for council's consideration. Mr. Felicetti's here, who's been involved more directly in the meetings and can probably respond to some of the technical questions.
Yes, Counsel Diadaddy.
Yes, Your Worship, I would make the motion that we direct staff to take the funds out of the CIP fund and move forward with this project. I think this would be great, we should have a skating rink right here in the city. Like that would be great.
Okay.
Sounds well to spend the money on it.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, thank you. Any comments or questions? We do have the report here, it's recent and just in addition. Counsel Cario.
Could someone give us an idea on how much money's left in the amount of money that we budgeted for the CIP? Which money's in there?
Mr. Harrison, could you answer that question?
To date, we have spent approximately, I'd have to get back to you. To be honest, I'd have to look to see how much we've spent in both the grants and then some of the funding for the downtown festivals.
Concerned, just have the money or have we spent it or are we close to the limit?
Well, I think the question should be then, do we have the funds?
We have sufficient funds, we have sufficient funds for that at the limit of $40,000. But to answer your question of what we specifically spent, I'd have to check.
So could we have an update for the next meeting on what's left?
Certainly, certainly.
Yes, the clerk wishes to make a comment.
Yeah, through the chair. We are planning on bringing back a report, kind of a wrap-up report on the downtown events. That was expected as a result of the approvals you gave back in July for some in-kind services related to those. So we can, we were planning on doing kind of a full accounting at that time on what's been spent on the downtown events. We've always told the downtown that any money that they're taking from the CIP obviously is taken away from the facades, but they've made the decision to make those requests.
Thank you. Counsel Thompson.
If somebody respond to a question I have, I thought it was a great idea to get activity going downtown and creating a skating rink. In fact, they were looking down at the other end, but in front of City Hall, I think that creates activity and is probably a good site for it. But they indicated that they would put, they would pay to put the equipment or the freezing equipment in and then they would take it out. Is this like a one-year situation or is this?
Mr. Felicetti, could you answer the question of the council?
Through the mayor, yes. It's a temporary ice rink. It's portable. They're prepared to pay up to $85,000 for the infrastructure, the chillers, the pipes. But come the springtime, they can relocate that anywhere in the downtown. So for this year, they're proposing the courtyard.
So what you're saying is then it can be utilized year after year, as long as they've got the equipment, they can put it anywhere.
Exactly.
And they would be purchasing the equipment as the association, right? Okay, any further comments? Having seen none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Motion's approved, thank you. Mr. Clerk, is there anything else? Okay, we'll move on then to reports in property and corporate services matters. We have, we just wanted to get Mr. Beaman to reiterate what he said earlier about on the first report. Okay, Mr. Beaman, do you want to discuss the matter of the surplus lands for sale, multiple city-owned lands? Please.
Just a list of the lands that, city-owned lands, if you staff determine after speculation that all staff are surplus to the city's requirements, and as explained earlier, because a number of these have seemed to have their significant uses, but I know the property owners have developed them, so staff would be posting those people first or waiting to continue purchasing them. One other thing I would ask, Counsel, if that is interesting, is moving the rankings to crack for number four to add what's with the.
Exemption of the land.
For a walkway, number five, there's a public walkway down the, the proposals to obtain the public walkway, but to convey.
Okay, we have a motion to move the report to the amendment. Is there a seconder? Counselor Peter Angelo, any comments or questions? Yes, Counsel Wing.
Just clarification regarding the timing. One of the reports yet to be considered tonight speaks to the current economic situation not being favorable to obtaining the best possible price for land. And we might be best advised to wait for the economy to rebound to some extent before proceeding with the sale question there. I would assume this applies to these lands as well. So when we speak of at a later date, we're not speaking of selling them within the next three months, I hope. It's going to be when the economy's rebounded and we can expect to achieve a better price for these.
I think that'll be council's decision at point that we wish to dispose of them. So we just declare them surplus at this point. Counsel Cario.
It's my understanding that it's up to us. If we don't get an offer, that's good.
That's right.
Can always say no.
That's right. As well, I can assure Counsel, we'll be able to walk over and get around these, including the backlog lanes and things you have to deal with. And there's a property that's supposed to be present in this street, that's a lot to deal with, that's all the things you have to do. And I only have one guy. And I only have one guy, so that'll take care of it.
Okay, we have a motion to move, yes, Councillor Maves?
Yes, Your Worship, just looking at the one map here, shows Bellevue Street and Property B.
Right.
Several vehicles around that. Is that a residence or a business there?
Can anybody answer that question? Mr. Beaman?
Here's the business exterior. I'm looking at probably, what, eight or 10 vehicles there? Are we gonna have another problem there on that street?
Down there over. Well, I think what's, if there's a problem, is that we haven't managed our land, and that we've allowed leaving owners to approach on it, they can use it as their own.
Just curious, two lots down, is that a junkyard, or is that somebody's backyard? The color picture really get, pardon me?
It's probably, it's probably the way that if somebody would complain about it, Councillor, and if someone's complaining, we'd probably get you.
Hey, thank you.
Yes, the clerk wants to make a comment, Mr. Yerfida?
Yeah, I believe on Bellevue, there may be some garages that have legal non-conforming use, so I think this may be the property in question. I recall getting complaints about it as far back as when I was in the mayor's office.
We have a motion before us, and any other questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. The next item deals with 2008-39 Riley Street Road End. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this matter? Yes, Mr. Mason, do you wish to speak? Yes, motion to allow Mr. Mason to speak. Moved by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo, all those in favor? Please come forward.
I'm, oh, mayor, council, staff. I'm here representing both Mr. Bevan and the Chippewa Dock Owners Association. The use of the street ends has historically been on a lease, as per the report. And we feel, or I feel, and Mr. Bevan and the CDOA feels, that the continued use of these street ends as leases would best benefit all parties. One of the issues we have with this particular street end is that there's an access right-of-way requirement by OPG and the city, our two partners with the Chippewa Dock Owners Association, steward those lands. And the properties to the, I guess it would be the west, are landlocked if this were to be sold. This dis-easement or right-of-way that's a requirement of the OPG would best be served by it being maintained as a lease. The other situation, I believe, that will probably be brought up by anybody who has to administer this, would be that these properties, if you sell one, you're gonna get a lot of requirements from the other less ease to do the same thing. We fully support the lease, and I understand the mandate of council to be fair under the municipal act to make it more an open system. But given the fact that these leases are already put out under a certain mandate, we felt that the highest and best use was what Mr. Bevan had presented. He is willing to terminate his lease concurrent with the existing one. He will provide that easement, that right-of-way that's required by both the city and the OPG. He would build there, which would give you an additional taxpayer, making a cash flow positive, adding service, adding development fees, and adding fees to your system. So, I mean, from our point of view, we believe that what we presented is the highest and best use, and that the lease, getting on with leases, in this case which would end, I believe, in 2042, concurrent with the other leases, would be the best application.
Okay, thank you, the pleasure of council. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, in fact, I had a discussion with Mr. Mason today. I think the idea of selling the property is certainly one that would cause us a great deal of difficulty with the other people who we have suggested leases were appropriate some time ago, because they all wanted to buy the property, sold this one, or same, sold this one. Certainly, the other ones would be in, asking to purchase them. I think we have a responsibility, because there's no more waterfront property to retain that, and putting this in line with the other ones under a lease situation is certainly appropriate, and won't get us any problems with the other ones. I would think that because Mr. Bevan has been so persistent in this, and the other interested party has backed off, I don't have a problem in making the motion that we enter into a lease with Mr. Bevan as respected.
Is there any further discussion, Councillor Wing?
Actually, I was going to make a motion that we retain the subject lands. I have concerns about leases now that we have a caution from staff in our report that we should satisfy ourselves that if future council would find the option of evicting a long-term tenant who has erected a building on the land useful. Experience in other municipalities indicates a public sympathy for the long-term tenants makes it very difficult to evict them. And I remember supporting the 40-year leases a few years ago, but I mean, when I read this, I'm thinking, gee, was that the right decision to make? And I look at the discussion on the greater public good that staff has given. Many municipalities are expending considerable funds in effort to restore public access to waterfront areas. And I know I've been reading in the review about what's going on in the municipality of Fort Erie with regards to that. And the Riley End Street property is contiguous with other public property that fronts on the Welland River, and of course, this is all open land. This is a pleasing vista that we may want to preserve, as was our former direction, and not reduce that vista with the erection of a building on the land. So I really support the idea of serving the greater public good and trying to expand our passive waterfront area. I mean, the one thing Niagara Falls lacks is, you know, public beaches and that sort of thing. I have to go to St. Catherine's and Port Coburn and Fort Erie for that sort of thing. So anything we can do to retain open waterfront area, I think, is really important, so I can't support this motion.
Any other comments? Councillor Fisher?
Thank you. This particular land has been leased previously, and after a lot of discussion, it is, in my opinion, is the last of the street ends. There is other areas that are open to the public to picnic or do whatever they wish. There's over at the boat ramp, there's all kinds of area. It involves, yeah, sorry, a hydro, but this is only a street end. And I believe to allow Mr. Bevan to use it and build on it would be more advantageous, because it would be maintained and kept in better shape than it is at this point in time. The city now has to go out and pick up behind people and mow the grass, they have to do a lot more work, and I think Mr. Bevan would do a better job. So I'm going to support this motion.
Councillor Wing?
You know, we have the same problem with our city parks, we have to pick up behind people and mow the grass, you know, and that's what parks are all about. It's recreational space for the public to enjoy, and yeah, we have to, as a city, do some maintenance. I recall before during the lease discussions in the past, that the eventual goal here is to return all this land along the Chippewa Creek to passive, open space for the public to enjoy. And I think leasing any more of this would be really another step against that eventual goal.
Okay, any other comments? We'll call the vote, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, opposed. Two, the motion's carried, thank you very much. Move on to the next item on the agenda, the Niagara Falls Memorial Arena proposed purchase by Canadian Agro Hotels. I believe there's some additional correspondence with respect to this matter. And I'm not sure who wants to address this. Mr. Beaman?
I would, I would move the recommendation.
And it was hoped, members of council, that we'd have an opportunity to, at the time that this property's going to be disposed of, to have the property appraised and possibly have the appraised value as the minimum bid, and proceed to see who was interested at that time, so that we could get the maximum of dollars for the taxpayers of our city. So this recommendation, I think, would certainly satisfy that. So we have a motion by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Carrillo. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have a question.
Who's seconding the motion? Councillor Wing? Okay, and Councillor Carrillo, please?
All the recommendations, number two, that the Niagara Falls Memorial Arena be sold by a public tender process. Do we have the right to refuse if we don't get the offer we want in this?
Mr. Beaman?
Yes, we can start with the, that way you shouldn't miss out.
So if we don't get what we want, because I'm not sure if this is the right time to sell that property, but...
No, we're not. We're not even there, there. Okay. So I think the message is very clear. Okay, any other comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We have another item, number four, the Dixon Street Road Closure and Cul-de-sac Project. Yes, Councillor Carrillo?
I'd like to declare a conflict, Your Worship, I just realized that is to a piece of property that I own.
Okay, so noted. Councillor Thompson?
I believe Mr. Lustig is here to comment on this.
Okay, motion to allow Mr. Lustig to speak. Moved by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Welcome, Mr. Lustig.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good evening, members of council. I'm Ed Lustig, and I'm a lawyer with the law firm Rodrick and Partners, and I act on behalf of Chris Roudan, who owns and controls many of the parcels of land on Cleveland Avenue and Dixon Street in the area covered by this report. And at the outset, I want to make it clear that my client is grateful for and fully supports the staff report before you tonight, and accordingly requests that you adopt the recommendations contained in it. Further, we commend the authors of this report, in particular Jeff Holman, who wrote the report with crafting report that addresses all of the significant issues in a fair, responsible, and creative manner protecting both the public and the private interests as follows. Firstly, the report maintains the principle that the city has had in achieving or putting through the EA-approved realignment of roads to discourage the migration of tourist traffic into residential areas. But at the same time, it goes towards making good on promises that the city made some time ago to several private citizens, including my client, whose interests were injuriously impacted by the temporary realignment works undertaken as part of the EA, and withdrew their claims at the time on the strength of the city's promises to take this kind of remedial action. Thirdly, it creatively provides for the replacement of temporary structure that is unsightly and is temporary with more permanent, more appropriate facilities that will be paid at least in part out of the funds that are generated by the sale of the lands. And lastly, it makes possible the opportunity to redevelop pieces of property, to create jobs and assessment in the future, subject, of course, to the planning process that the city has complete control over. And while there may be some small tweaks to the location of the new turning circles that are ultimately constructed on the basis of what the land holdings are at that time, and this is something I've spoken with the engineering department about, we fully endorse the report, we thank staff for its work, and we ask council to adopt it. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Councillor Wing? Moved by Councillor Wing, seconded by Councillor Thompson. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Lustig. Move on to the next item, the council remuneration. Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I don't know how this got off track, but since 1997, council didn't have to discuss its remuneration, which I think is appropriate. And how it got off track, I think it was Dean Irafeeta's fault. And as a result, I think we should actually have a review of senior staff and how they are remunerated with respect to an automatic increase that the, that the union gets. I think, and I see some snickering and laughing, I think I'm serious, that we should be looking at that as an automatic that hasn't been in the past. And I think that I'd like to see a different way of doing that, because I think there's actually a conflict between the staff negotiating with the union and then automatically getting that kind of increase. I think there's probably a better way of doing that, related to inflation or something else which is appropriate. And I also have, now that Mr. McDonald's gone, have a problem with people getting the same percentage. Our staff people making $40,000 a year get $1,200. Somebody who's making $160,000 a year gets a substantial amount. This is one way of keeping up with the other municipalities with their top positions, but I think it's, would be more appropriate for us to have an opportunity to have some dialogue and discussion. And I wouldn't even mind seeing some kind of a merit system being suggested, where there are people who accomplish and work above and beyond. It could be remunerated appropriately, and there certainly are some in this city hall who should be considered for the work they do above and beyond, and I would like to see something like that happen. So I would move the report with those comments, and maybe in some, I'm in the future, well, the report doesn't say anything, that we go back to the original position of how the council is remunerated, and maybe a staff report sometime in the future with respect to senior staff remuneration.
If you're seconding that motion, Councillor Wing? Pardon? You want to speak? Okay, stand up.
Let me go back to the number seven.
Actually, I was picking up on the suggestion in here that council wage increases could use economic comparables, like the Canadian Consumer Price Index increases and the industrial composite of the Ontario Average Weekly Wages and Salaries Index. You know, it would be even more arms-length if we were to tie it to something like that than to the QP negotiated increase, because even though we don't, we're not actively participating in the negotiations with the union, we are the body which ultimately approves the negotiated agreement. So we are arms-length to, only to a certain extent right now. If we, if we go to an outside indicator like these suggested, then that ties it truly to the state of the economy, so that, you know, we don't want to see our real earnings here eroded, which is the idea of increasing it with, either in line with the QP contract or using one of these comparables. But, you know, I think the idea of looking at the senior staff earnings certainly has a lot of merit, so I was really happy to hear that suggestion.
Councillor Maves?
Your Worship, I thought we already had pay bands and step raises and whatnot.
Yes.
There's trend here, Ben?
We do, we do have bands.
Well, I was just saying, in terms of merit rate, that's already built into it, not? I don't know why we need to report on that, if all we've got is in the...
That's not in the motion, but that was just discussed, so it's not in the motion at this point.
I understand that, but I wonder why we should make a motion when we already have that in place?
Well, we don't have a motion at this point, it's not in the motion. He was suggesting that might take place later on. Councillor Thompson?
Well, the merit increases or not, you have a pay schedule where you get an annual increase, and you also get a percentage increase according to the QP. There's no merit evaluation or whatever, as far as I'm concerned, to the chair, to Mr. Burden shaking his head.
Mr. Burden?
Through the chair, we do have a grid system where there are steps for non-union positions moving from a start rate up to a job rate. There are five steps involved. The actual increase that is approved by the council is applied to each of those steps, and the job rate itself is also increased by the amount of the QP increase. A person who has reached the job rate does get the annual increase, that's not considered a merit increase. However, there are annual performance evaluations done for non-union positions. But pay increases, I believe, have not been tied to those particular evaluations. For merit.
Merit increase is what I wanted to hear.
We have a motion on the floor, members of council. Call the vote, all those in favor? Please hold your hands up. The motion's in the report.
No.
Would the clerk want to qualify that?
Yeah, that the council remuneration be tied to the recent QP ratification, and that staff report back on remuneration for senior staff.
Okay, now you've heard the motion. Call the vote, all those in favor? Please hold your hands up. One, two, three, four, five, opposed. One. Thank you, the motion's carried. Move on to ratification of Community Services Committee actions. Call on the acting chair, Councillor Maves. Call on the acting chair, Counselor Maves.
Yes, Your Worship, following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of the October 6, 2008, meeting be approved under reports TS-2008-49 Transit Strategic Business Plan Draft Executive Summary Report Phase One, Two, and Three, that the recommendations outlined in the Niagara Transit needs, opportunities, vision, and policy options. Draft Executive Summary Report Phases One, Two, and Three be adopted by council. TS-2008-27 Keller Road and McLeod Road Parking and Traffic Bylaws. Council approve the report with the exception of the section south of Kate Durden and Loretta on the south side, Bethgate Accommodation, Avon Street Parking in that section. TS-2008-54 Wyandale Brenner Road Parking Review, that the no parking restrictions outlined in the report be approved. TS-2008-55 Carlton Avenue Disabled Parking, that two disabled parking spaces be provided on the west side of Carlton Avenue from a point twenty-eight meters north of Culp Street to a point forty meters north of Culp Street. Under new business, that staff work with Mr. Agretta about booking ice time in April for his event. Failing that, staff look into the suggested dates in January or February.
Moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Pietrangelo. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Ratification of Corporate Services Committee. Counselor Pietrangelo is chair.
Thank you, Your Worship. At the meeting prior to this one, Corporate Services Committee recommends the following. First of all, approval of the October 6 Corporate Service Minutes. Under 2009 funding request, that the 2009 funding request from the following agencies be referred to final budget deliberations, Niagara Falls Public Library, GNGH Foundation, Niagara Falls Board of Museums, Women's Place of South Niagara, and YWCA for the Niagara region, and also that the financial submissions from the following agencies be received for information, Winter Festival of Lights, Niagara Chair Event, St. John's Ambulance, and Project Share. Under reports, Your Worship, we had one F-2008-42 dealing with the 2007 Municipal Performance Measures Program. It was recommended that the report be received for information, and also that staff post the information on the city's website, and I would so be permitted.
Moved by Counselor Pietrangelo, seconded by Counselor Diadati. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Now call on our clerk for the ratification of in-camera committee actions, please.
Recommendation that council approve the agreements of purchase and sale for portions of a laneway located between McGrail Avenue and Ellen Avenue, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreements of purchase and sale.
Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Ratification of Human Resources Committee actions. Mr. Clerk?
After interviews with the shortlisted firms, the Human Resources Committee recommends that council appoint Margaret Campbell and the firm of Ray Bernstein for the executive search assignment for the new chief administrative officer, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any agreements.
Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Pietrangelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Move on to the consent agenda.
Move the entire consent agenda, Your Worship.
Okay, moved and whole, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any comments? Yes, Counselor Wing?
Actually, I wanted to discuss one of the reports, our 2008-32 Review of the Request Elimination of Bottled Water City of Niagara Falls Facilities. Can you lift that one?
We can lift that. Okay, we'll deal on the first, the items overall. Everybody deal, we'll deal on all of them except this one, okay? Okay, so anything further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Now we'll move on to item 2008-32 Review Request by Counselor Wing.
What I couldn't understand when I read this report was when St. Catherine's Council in January of 2007 has passed a motion to eliminate bottled water from municipal offices in sponsored committee meetings, and City of Welland recently discontinued the practice of providing bottled water at meetings and events at city hall. Why we are waiting to follow suit with this? I mean, I certainly support the Community Information Forum to gather community and stakeholder input regarding the review of eliminating the sale of bottled water in city facilities, but I don't understand why we wouldn't go ahead now with eliminating the use of plastic water bottles at city-run meetings, and why we wouldn't move ahead now with reducing the use of disposable styrofoam and plastic utensils at all city meetings and special events and provide an environmentally friendly option. You know, it's baby steps getting us started on the right road, and, you know, certainly we want to have public meetings and get input from all stakeholders, but this isn't going to affect anybody but us and the people on the committees which meet at city facilities. So what's the problem with that? Why can't we add those into the recommendation that we eliminate plastic water bottles and eliminate, reduce the use of styrofoam and plastic utensils at city committees and city hall meetings?
Are you asking the question?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dulevik, are you able to answer that, or would you like Ms. Morrissey to answer that?
I'll try to answer it. To Your Worship, if that's something that council wants to do, I guess there'd be nothing stopping it, the city taking the lead and banning it. We were just trying to get some more input on it, but if council wants to take leadership in that and ban those items, they can feel free to do so.
Counselor Wing?
I think we need to take leadership. We're going into the provincial communities in Bloom competition next year. We have to show leadership on environmental sustainability. So I will move the recommendation with the addition that the use of plastic water bottles be eliminated at city-run meetings and the reduction of the use of disposable styrofoam and plastic utensils at all city meetings and special events, and provision of an environmentally friendly alternative be added into the recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Counselor Pietrangelo? That mean we'll be eating Kentucky Fried Chicken by hand? Counselor Thompson?
Excuse me. We had a little discussion at this, at the senior staff meeting, which I attended this time, and I think there's an opportunity for some leadership also from the members of council and probably the staff. I'd like to, and this came up at the meeting, suggest that the staff determine an appropriate, and I thought the plastic bottle situation was going to solve itself because of all the contaminants and the problems, health problems with respect to plastics that they're throwing plastic baby bottles out by the bundle out of the stores because they are a hazard. And I think it would be appropriate if the staff determined an appropriate stainless steel container with the city logo on that the council could purchase themselves and the city staff to set an example of what we're attempting to do. I would like to have one myself sitting here and be happy to pay for it to use at our meetings here at city hall. I think it's a good idea.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, first of all. We can deal with that. Any other comments with respect to that motion? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, move on. The next item is the sale of land bylaws. I'm going to ask if there's anyone present who has an interest with respect to a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement of purchase and sale with Skirlock Holdings respecting the purchase of lands being Part Five and Part Nine on reference plan 59R 13580 in the City of Niagara Falls, the reasonable value of Niagara. Obviously, there's no one here. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, the bylaws 177 to 184 are related to the laneway we referred to in the in-camera ratification, so I don't believe Mr. Johnson owns any of those, so you can take all the bylaws together.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that then. So at this point, you have a motion to introduce the bylaws, the bylaws to give them the first reading. Moved by Counselor Pietrangelo, seconded by Counselor Diadati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2008-177 to 2008-193, we're at a first time.
We have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading. Moved by Counselor Pietrangelo, seconded by Counselor Diadati. And once again, council's heard the motion. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaws 2008-177 to 2008-193, we're at a second and third time pass.
Okay, any new business? Counselor Fisher?
I thought we should go when we were out to the site off of Fourth Avenue for the construction for the new arena. Because I stood there in the rain and wind. I looked over at the building which used to be occupied by the YWCA. It is in pretty bad shape. It really needs to have either improved or something. Someone has to address it. Plus the fact it is covered with graffiti. It is not very nice to look at, and if we're going to get a new arena, I think we should be looking at what this property is and who owns it and what is going to happen to it. So I really believe that I'd like to see something happen to that particular property.
Do we have any comments for staff? Can anybody address that? Pardon? Bylaw enforcement or clerk?
Yeah, well, there's limited what we could do under property standards, but, you know, make a motion, and staff will then contact the owner and see what we can do through our property standard bylaw and try to compel the owner to do it.
Do you know who the owner is?
The last I've known, it was...
It was in a restaurant in Toronto. We'd have to check to see if it's still...
Have you seen the building?
Yes, I know what you're...
It really is in bad shape.
The fire department has had some dealings with him, and he was, almost three months ago, had what's promised, and said he made some proposals to develop the property, so we'll follow on what he was telling us about.
Thank you very much.
Anything further? Counselor Wing?
Just to follow up on Counselor Fisher's comments, a member of one of the BIAs on which I sit had attended a graffiti workshop not long before our last meeting, and he reported back that it's really important that graffiti be removed within 24 hours of its first appearance because otherwise it just is an invitation for the graffiti artists to come back, and that's when you get the proliferation of graffiti. So I don't know whether there's something we can do under property standards to put some sort of requirement in place, but if you don't nip this in the bud, the problem just spreads like wildfire.
Thank you.
Mr. Dulevik?
I sit on Niagara Falls Community Pleasing Service. We are going to bring a report to council on the graffiti and all the information we've gathered over the year and a recommendation, so that will be coming very soon. Thank you very much.
Okay, any new business? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I have two quick things. The first one regarding the downtown board meeting, I support the downtown redevelopment without exception, but I was rather surprised when I read in the paper after the meeting we had that there was a bill for $12,000 that the council had agreed to split. I asked for the resolution, the clerk, and it basically said that we coordinate a meeting with the downtown and that any costs we split with the downtown. There was no figure as far as money is concerned. If I had known, well, I voted against the motion anyway, but if I had known that the meeting would have cost $12,000, I would have questioned that, and I would have suggested maybe we do storefront downtown rather than have a meeting that I didn't get an awful lot of. It was interesting to see what other people are doing, but I think that it wasn't an awful lot learned, other than the possibility of setting up some opportunities to assist by offering additional loans. So my only comment there is I hope that next time we have a meeting where there is, if it's known that there's substantial costs involved, I think the council should be aware of that. $12,000 for that meeting, I thought was a lot of money. My other comment is with respect to, and I've made many comments over the past with respect to the economic development, both in the city and also at the region. I was extremely pleased to see, and I don't know whether you all got a copy of it, from the Ottawa Citizen, where the mayor there is because of the economy, because of the lack of activity for economic development, and we're not unique here. We have extremely difficult times as we speak, and it looks like they're going to get even more difficult trying to attract new industry and development in the city. And you don't, if you're running a business, you don't continue with the same format and the same spending when you know that there's little or no opportunity for success in a lot of these areas. The mayor of Ottawa has suggested that he revamp the Economic Development Department. This is something that Counselor Puttik at the region has constantly been suggesting and asking for, and the report outlines some very common sense approach to revamping and redeveloping and setting specific goals with respect to economic development. And I hope that every member of council has a copy of this. Has anybody got a copy of the Ottawa Citizen? If not, the clerk is going to give you one. And I think that I would like to have a report back from the Economic Development Officer if there are some merit and things that we could do locally with respect to economic development, and certainly encourage the region to look at their spending of $2.7 million, how much new industry, commerce, and development are happening, and what is going to happen in the near future. Not very much. If you're running a business, you'd certainly be cutting back, and they should be reexamining themselves the same that we should be. So hopefully, that'll be taken seriously.
Are you making a motion, councilor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'm going to report back from our Economic Development Officer with respect to the changes that they're making in Ottawa with respect to economic development, changing their whole system, focusing in on specific projects, and reexamining them and trying to be more efficient and effective in what they're trying to do with economic development. Nothing wrong with reexamining yourself.
We have a secretary, Counselor Fisher. Any discussion on the matter? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Any new business? Counselor Diadati?
Yes, Your Worship, just briefly to remind everybody that Sleep Chief Jerry Creep starts tonight. The next four days, there are some good rooms left still. The best way to find out where there are rooms is just go to the city's website, which is niagarafalls.ca, and you can click on the icon, the Sleep Chief icon, and you can see what rooms are still available. That's all, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you very much for reporting on that. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Pietrangelo, seconded by Counselor Diadati. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, everybody.